I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you everybody. Good evening. We will move on first to our reporter, the chairman, and we have our Newtown Public School Superintendent and Principal Sandy Hook that would like to address the board. So if you'd like to come up to the microphone that's set up right there.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. It's my pleasure to be here with Dr. Arardi, our superintendent. I'm Kathy Gombas, and I've had the honor of being Sandy Hook's principal for the last three years in Monroe. I just wanted, we just wanted to come one final time to say that we are so incredibly grateful for your support and your love and just everything you've done for us in the last three years. When I look back on so many acts of kindness that have been, you know, that people have done in the last three years, yours was the largest. Your decision to allow us to stay together has probably made the largest impact on our healing. We have a way to go, but when you look at my students and my parents and my teachers, the one thing that really has helped us is staying together and allowing all our services to be there. I want to thank you for putting up with us because I know it hasn't always been easy, especially for your middle school principal, who went my entire school evacuates to his, but he's done nothing but smiled at us for three years, and your parents and everyone's been wonderful. So I just wanted to say that when you go home tonight, really know that your leadership and the leadership of the board before you has just really made the largest impact on our community and our kids. So thank you. We have Sandy Hook t-shirts for everybody. If your size is wrong, blame Mr. Reynoso. I used to be his boss, believe it or not. Can you imagine how difficult that has been? No, it's his birthday, right?
Yes.
He texted me, yes. And we certainly have replacements for anyone because we really want you to wear it with pride. And we also have a plaque of our kids' artwork that you'll see hanging all over Monroe, and this one's for your offices.
Thank you kindly. That's beautiful.
Just if I could, a couple of closing comments on my end. I think it's important to put on the record that the first phone call that I received, or one of the first phone calls I received two and a half years ago when I raised my hand for Newtown was from your superintendent. And it was all about what can I do? How can I help? And to me, the true definition of a star is someone who works under the radar, does it without any fanfare, and does it with his heart. And I think that Jim represents his leadership team. I think he represents you. And he represents this district with only the class and the character that's expected from the absolute best. I know I speak for the Board of Education, and Ms. Lane, the thank you is just not enough. Where as we close our doors on June 13th, at the end of this school year, sometimes the stories behind the stories in the hearts that make this all possible will forever be the moment that Monroe said, "How can we help?" And then three years later, still as committed as they've been from the first day that they said they were in. So from my office, from Dr. Gombas, our staff, her students, our Board of Education, we recognize the Monroe Board of Education, the Monroe leadership and staff as the best of the best, and we thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Joe, I think that, I think it goes without saying too, that it has really been our pleasure to be there. And serendipity as it is, to make that school available was just, I think, an act of God that that was there. And it's really been our pleasure. We've learned a lot watching how you guys have managed and led the way, and it's really unusual, but we really appreciated you being here as well. Thank you.
Thank you folks. Thank you. Congratulations on your budget pass too.
Thank you.
If you want to check out the new school, we're there anytime after July 15th. Just email us.
Thank you.
I will take you up on that.
Yeah, no, please.
I've been, I've been kind of itchy to get a look at it.
After July 15th, I told them, just email me.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we would like to recognize our Mastic Board of Education representatives. Ally's not here today, but we do have a mid and canoe here. So we have little gifts for you to thank you for serving on our board for the past, well, for the past year. If you guys can come up here. Just a little something to say thank you for all your input and all your work the past year. Thank you very much. And good luck in college, and thank you, and we will see you next year.
Thank you, guys. It's amazing that a year has gone by already.
It is.
Did you make a decision yet?
I think I voted you, Ben.
Excellent.
Ally had a track meet today, I believe.
Right here at home.
So she may, she may make it at some point during the evening. If not, we'll take that and I'll come over tomorrow if I don't make a presentation.
Great, thank you. All right, we will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Thank you. Do I have any discussion?
Yes, we need to add Vice Chair George King onto the, onto the minutes of our last meeting.
I was not at the last meeting.
Right, so we need to.
But you're missing. So if you want to add him to, under the section for not in attendance, absent, right?
Correct.
Because he's missing altogether from the minutes.
Exactly, exactly.
Do I have a second to that amendment?
Second.
Thank you. We can just do it as one, right?
No.
Got to do, all right.
Do the approval of the amendment.
Okay. So we have any discussion on the amendment to add George to the minutes? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. Now we will go back to the regular motion to approve the consent agenda. Do you want to say anything about any of the appointments or resignations before?
In your packet, I believe on page 10, you'll see the beginning of the, there are two pages there for new hires. The first one is Lauren Morrissey. I was involved all day last Monday observing lessons by candidates. It was really a pleasure to watch kindergarten instruction going on. Lauren stood out as the candidate for us, and so you can see her credentials here. University of Connecticut for her bachelor's degree and Sacred Heart University for her master's in education. And then Allison O'Grady, I had told you that we were courting, looking at a long-distance person trying to come back to the state of Connecticut from the Pittsburgh area. Allison too, I was involved in the interview process and watching lessons be presented. She's an outstanding educator and somebody that we could really use her strengths now that we've had some transitions in Monroe Elementary's music program. So we need to bring that back around, and you'll notice Allison went to Duquesne University for her bachelor and Yale University for her master's degree. She was a Connecticut teacher for several years, seven years, then left and now is wishing to return. So Allison O'Grady and Lauren Morrissey are standouts and ready to join us. On page 12, you have a letter of resignation, and it's with some sadness that I announced this. I knew that the possibility existed for Andrea to, to move on to a directorship, okay? And she'll be moving on to New Fairfield Public Schools as the Director of Special Services beginning on July 1. So we are in the process now of backfilling that position, and likely tomorrow we will get the position posted and move forward.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any, any further discussion on that? Any, say anything? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Great, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committee and liaisons, and now we will put our Mastic Board reps to work after getting nice gifts.
All right, we got a, we got a couple of full weeks coming up. Okay. So first, I just want to mention that Matt Winkler and Alexa Valzisi were awarded the Super Intense Award, which is one of like the highest awards that we give here at Mastic, given to one senior. That's a male, one for female, and that, you can see him in the lobby. There's going to be a little plaque and stuff. So that's really cool. And then Wednesday, we're going to have a pre-prom assembly, period three, talking just about like safety and things like that. It's important for kids, you know, going out Friday night to really know like how to stay safe and be responsible on prom night, which is going to be Friday. And Prospect, we're at the Aria, so it's a new locate, new location for us. We're not at the Water View anymore, but it's going to be fun. And then post-prom is obviously going to be back over here, done by the PTA, which is like a really nice thing that they do for all of us. Also, we're going to have capstone presentations going to be happening on Thursday, the 26th. And then kids, if they don't do that, they're going to have to go one day after the graduation and come back. So hopefully everybody's going to present by then. Also, we're going to have senior banquet. It's going to be June 3rd. We're going to have the High Honors Breakfast is going to also be on June 3rd. And then the senior trip is going to be the Friday, the 27th to Six Flags New England.
All right. We also have a slew of concerts coming up, starting with the Chorus Concert this Thursday night at 7:00 in the auditorium, so go if you can. Then after that is the Strings Concert next Tuesday, the 24th, also in the auditorium. And then following that on the 26th is the Jazz Concert. After this, we will also have Underclassmen Awards, which are the 31st, and that's just recognizing underclassmen, freshmen to juniors who have shown outstanding abilities in their various subjects. And then after that, we will have Sports Awards the 2nd of June, and that just same kind of deal, just recognizing athletes who have done very well in their sport. And yeah, that's me. I'll come up.
Great, thank you. All right, we will move on to the Turf Field Committee.
Turf Field Committee, everything is, is working smoothly right now. We were granted our final approval for P and Z. We are now awaiting the conclusion of a 15-day window plus one week of an appeals process. We opened bids for the general contractor, and you'll see later on in our business that the winning bidder there was Darling Construction. They were the lowest qualified bidder present. They're also a local firm in Stratford, Connecticut. So that was good news, and they get rave reviews for the work that they do. So our plan going forward is, and we're going to have to amend the motions that I have down at the bottom of the page because what I wanted the board to do was to accept the turf committee's recommendation on the contractors, both for the oil tank and for the turf field construction, but accept them and recommend them to the town council to actually hire because it's the town council that gives the approval to enter into a contract, and then the first select would sign so off. So I just want to be clear. We have to just change the wording on those two motions a little bit to make sure that they're, they're accurate and place the authority of the hiring with the town council and the first select. The plan going forward is that if the appeal process goes through and there's no hiccups along the way, it's our estimation that we will have contractors on site on June 15th and ready to dig. The, there were two contracts. One was the general contractor, who then has a contract that they adopted with Shaw, which is the manufacturer of the material. The manufacturer of the material that we had specked, that bid came in about $100,000 less than anticipated. So right now, the base bid of the project is in the 1.6 and some little change area. So that's a, that's $100,000 towards those alternatives that we could apply. And you know, if we do that and if we don't use contingency money, et cetera, we can get a lot of that work done right away. So that's our, that's our goal and our hope. The, Rick Henderson is gearing up for the fundraising activities that have to go on. I know that the High School Booster Club is getting ready. They're talking about selling bricks and all kinds of avenues here to raise funds. So everything is looking great for an early start on the turf project.
Does anybody have questions for Jim on that? All right, does anybody else have any committee or liaison reports you want to share till this evening? All right, hearing none, we will move on to public participation. All right, hearing none, we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Gabby, if you wouldn't mind, would the fund balance?
Just briefly, claims, we went down a little bit in April. We're still trending to the good, but on the lower end of our reserve target. We're more at the 18% range rather than the 23% range. So I think John's going to lose his bet this year. John always bets me that it's going to end up at over $2 million, and I don't think it's going to this year, so. But so far in May, we are actually trending a little bit higher than we have in the past. We're, we're in the mid-600s already, so. But it is the end of the year, and that's to be expected as people have used up their HSAs and their deductibles, and now we're picking up the tab. Jim spoke to you about the turf field. Just, it wasn't really mentioned, the winning bid for the oil tank removal at Stepney was Connecticut Tank Removal. We only received two bids on that. One was quite high, and Connecticut Tank Removal came in under budget. One of the reasons apparently we only received a few bids is that some of the other companies that we thought were going to bid were actually already busy and didn't think they could actually get the project done in the timeframe that was given. So it wasn't that it was a bad project. It's just, it's a short timeframe. It has to be done and everything, you know, right after school starts, gets out, and right before school gets in. So it doesn't give them a lot of time. Year end, we opened up the budget for fiscal '17 for people to begin putting in purchase orders for, you know, supplies or anything that we know is going to happen, and we are actively encouraging people to close their current purchase orders and to stop spending money. I don't, we, the finance department kind of likes to end the year on the fiscal year with as few purchase orders open as possible. Just makes it a little easier and a little bit clearer. But otherwise, we're just kind of ticking around right now. Good, thank you.
The commencement ceremonies, the moving up ceremony for Jackie Howell, which is called a recognition night, I guess, is June 13th here in the Mastic gym, and the graduation is on the field for the high school on June 14th.
God willing.
Well, there might be excavators on either side of the stage, but well, yeah, if there's no rain, right?
Yeah.
Joe's, are you getting nervous about that already?
No, that's his job.
Somebody has to put out rose rapings. That's what you have to do.
I'm just reminding board members that if you will be in attendance on those, let Terry know so that we can reserve seating for you and make sure that you have, we have you all listed on programs, et cetera. That needs to be done, okay? And that's it. I'll save my other comments when we get to those motions.
All right, great. All right, well, we have no presentations tonight, sorry. So we will move on. We will move on to old business, and do I have a motion to approve policy 5131.3 as presented?
So move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do I have discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to new business, and actually, we will tweak this to motion to accept the turf building committee's recommendation to recommend Darling Construction for the general construction of the Mastic Track and Field project to the town council?
Yes.
How does that sound?
Great.
Great.
All right, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Jim. Do we have discussion on this?
Can I just ask, when's the anticipated open date? When do we think it's going to be completed by?
Well, you need, the estimate from my loan at McRum is we need 90 clear days.
Okay.
Okay, not clear days. There could be a drizzle, but you can't have a washout.
Sure.
Okay, we need 90 workdays in order to get the job completed. So we're looking into, you know, if we start June 15th, if we have good weather all the way through mid to late September, we should be wrapping it up.
So how's the football schedule going to work for the, for the fall?
All of our early home games will be played away.
Okay.
And then we'll bring.
We're hoping to be able to schedule some.
Absolutely. Joe, do you have any details about how that's going on? I mean, it's just.
Football, boys and girls soccer, field hockey, we'll just have to move games.
What about practices?
We don't, we don't practice on those fields. We don't practice on that field. That doesn't matter.
But once the field is done, we will have the ability to practice on that field when it rains, you know, and you don't have a field to play on. So that's a, it's a saving grace there.
So we'll, yeah, we'll lose some home games early in the year, just like scheduled. They can't back end us. It's kind of screwed up something, but we'll get home to that now.
We won't lose them. We just won't have them here. We're not going to lose any games this year. Next year.
We can't, not with the new field. That has to be a requirement.
So you're not scheduling them, but it's, it's possible that the field could be ready by then. If the field is ready, can you change the schedule back to having those home games home?
My gut reaction is to say yes, but without confirming that with, with John DeGeneres. But I don't see why you wouldn't be able to make that call. In August, if we know that everything is, is sliding right into place, you know, we'll start calculating what days we could start moving things back.
Anybody else have anything else on that? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the motion to accept Darling Construction to recommend them to the town council for the contract in favor? Thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to item B, which is to accept a contractor for the removal and replacement of the underground storage tank. And again, this will be a, us approving to recommend them to the town council. So do I have a motion to accept? And I'm sorry, what's the name of them again?
Connecticut Tank Removal.
Connecticut Tank Removal as the contractor for the removal and replacement of the underground storage tank at Stepney Elementary School to recommend to the town council to enter into this contract. Thank you. Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Do I have discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. So both of those will move on to the town council for the contracts and entering into that to get that started. We will move on to item C, which is the adoption of the 2016-17 adjusted budget. Do I have a motion? And I'm assuming, Gabby, this is it in front of us. So let's do the motion first, and then you can discuss what changes there are. So I have a motion to adopt a 2016-2017 adjusted budget as presented. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Gabby, do you want to go over?
Sure. What yellow highlights, you'll notice there's about five of them, four of them. It's just where we reduced the budget after the Board of Finance, reduced it by $200,000. So if you recall, we had additional certified staff. We had to actually go up, so it's not as much of a reduction. If you flip to the third page, medical and drug, we reduced it by another $100,000. You go to the sixth page, you'll notice natural gas came down and heat energy, which is our oil, went up. We took Mastic completely off natural gas for next year, and we locked in oil at a dollar, it was a dollar 67 or a dollar 68 per gallon. So Mastic is back on that. Yeah. And then on the final page, equipment, new, non-instructional, that's where the tractor and the truck were, and if you recall, those were taken out and we're paying for it out of capital reserve. So those are the changes that get you to the budget of 54,641,767, which is a 1.55 increase over last year.
Did you say we're reducing medical and drug?
Correct. I mean, well, it went up, but we're, we're reducing the increase.
Okay.
So we reduced, we were originally going up about two, I think we actually started out at over $300,000, and we reduced it by about 200 over the course of the last six months.
It's important for us to do this exercise before we start the new fiscal year, in my mind, because we don't want to be comparing to the budget that was presented. You know, we want to make the changes so that we have a good starting point to compare to for the following year's budget.
Do I have any other discussion on this before we move on to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the adopting the new 2016-2017 adjusted budget as presented? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to item D, which is to poll the board for the 2016-17 professional development.
We know how much you all enjoy presentations. But you know, it's really, I really want to tell you that what you're doing in terms of asking for professional development and trying to understand more deeply the operations of the school system, I think is, is a wonderful goal. And I, and I think that because we've done this exercise now for a while, you're much more aware of the day-to-day operations in the system than, than most boards of education are. I just handed out to you a list of all of the professional development that's occurred to date. You've had something on FERPA, on the headline portal, on the grants and safety and security, FOI. If you remember, we started that one in the summer last year. On the book read that we did, Finish Lessons, Regional Crisis Team, School Choice, What to Expect for the S-Back, District Student Data, BOE Duties and Responsibilities, what we do in finance and human resources and in facilities and operations, and the capstone project. So we've covered quite a few things, and I just want to put out there and have a general conversation with you for a couple of minutes as to where do you want to go from here so that we could start putting together that PD or those sessions for you so that you can become even better acquainted with the day-to-day stuff.
Anybody can just jump in. Now, one thing I would say, like, I think we had this a very, very long time ago, but I think Marcia, the special ed lawyer, I forgot her last name.
Moses.
Moses. She had come and done a, did a presentation to us, didn't she, Alan?
Yeah.
About special ed law and how special ed works. I don't know if we want to do something like that again, a refresher, since that was quite a while ago. And we have new people. Is that something everybody would be interested in? Anybody have any other topics they'd really like covered?
Do you have any thoughts that you wanted to mention?
I mean, specific curriculum ideas, if there's a curriculum area that you'd want to get updated on. Those are always productive, I think. John, do you have any thoughts?
I was thinking maybe like our, how we, the process we use for curriculum council and how curriculum goes to you, what happens before it goes to you. Maybe we can talk about that, the curriculum model.
That would be great. Alan, you had one?
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to do special ed, you know, recent special ed laws, you might want to have someone just go over what the categories of special ed are. You know, the 12 different categories that kids can qualify for under special ed.
Great, thank you.
Did we ever do 504? Did we ever do a presentation about 504? And I think that's sometimes confusing to people.
Thanks, John.
Well, if you think of anything, just, you know, shoot me or John an email.
Can we ask our principals also if they have any thoughts or suggestions on that?
I thought that was a great one. The 504 is great because that's, especially with the increasing amount of anxiety that we're getting with our kids. That's a very.
Is there any other thoughts?
About something about communications.
How each school.
How to get the word out there better. I mean, we've tried every avenue. Alan, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we can also talk about each, but each teacher's goal the last few years to increase communication. We could talk about how that works.
Something along that line.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
We'll do student data again. That'll definitely come back because we'll have that.
It's a yearly event, yeah.
Yeah, that's yearly.
I think that's a great start.
I think that is a great start.
Okay.
I'm sure those things will come up. They will go, wow, we should do blah, 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 and we can always add that in. Thank you.
The information on the website that was put together was really helpful and interesting too, that we covered. That was really good.
Jamie?
I'm not sure how to word it or how it's going to come out, but have we, have we ever filed a student as far as their program of study at the high school from a freshman to a senior about what's offered and what they take? I mean, I've been stopped by parents so many times about the handbook and what's offered, but have we as a Board of Ed, does anyone know how many credits they get a year? How many credits they need to graduate?
It's almost like an academic pathway.
Yeah, timeline.
A timeline of when they walk in their freshman year.
Great, that's a good one.
Great.
Okay, if you think of any others, just let us know.
Axol. Boys, do you have any?
Well, I think it was 20.5 last year, but now it's like, I think it's 21 or maybe a little higher. As for our, as for like, what's offered, I know one, almost like, one, there's lots of like, interesting classes offered, but the only problem is, is there a weight? So that can be a deterrent for many students, like, there's a public speaking class that was like, half a year, but like, college prep, so if I took it, that would lower my GPA, so I wouldn't want to take it. But I would love to take it, but I don't want to lower GPA. I don't want to do it at the cost of my GPA, essentially. So it's like, it's things like that, that you would have to be careful for, because it's good to offer these classes, but you don't want to offer them and then have no one take them, so, yeah.
I think that's actually a large issue with the new, the new GPA system that was enacted, I guess, implemented, that if you make like, the AP and stuff worth a lot more, then you get kids that don't want to take an extra class, that might be an honest, that maybe they don't have to take classes, but instead of taking that like, free period, it would have taken an extra class, it might have been honors or college prep, but now that's kind of a thing that you don't want to do because it's going to risk you hurting your GPA and stuff. In terms of other things, like, I guess, for the Board of Ed, towards like, PD and stuff, I just think it would be cool to get more things like, from students, like, actually like, student presentations on things about student climate, or like, you're saying, planning as a student, or like, what's it like to be a student in the classroom, or issues students are facing, things like that, just to get a more of a look into what it's like for students and teenagers here at Massey. That's just a top-down approach.
That is a really good one.
Because, like, in the, in recent years, like, the competitive culture of students has increased severe, like, it's become so much more competitive now that people aren't taking what they want to take, they take what helps them beat their class fees, it helps, what, what helps them do better, what helps them get into a better college and stuff like that, rather than maybe necessarily learning what they want to learn.
What creates their passion, makes them creative and innovative.
Yeah.
I, I know, when I walk the hallways, I mean, I graduated here in 75, I'm sure the program of studies have changed incredibly, but it, it really is all about the GPA and that's why I just would like to follow.
I think it's a great, great suggestion.
Thank you, I appreciate it. You guys have always, for the past year, I've always come up with some great stuff and great questions, so we appreciate it.
That's why you guys got something special and Ally did. Don't compare with her, okay?
All right, thank you. We will move on then, if there's nothing else, to item E, which is request for additional sick time for two employees for the 2015-16 year. Do I have a motion to approve the additional sick time? Thank you, Jerry. Second? Perfect, do we have any discussion on this?
I will tell you that it's, it's an unfortunate event when, when people run out of sick time, when they're gravely ill, and the two employees that we're talking about are really superstars in our minds and so they're very appreciative of the ability to do this.
It was brought up, it was brought up for us to vote on it, it's obviously, apparently needed, so.
Yes.
I don't think there is any question in my mind of course, we should go in.
Right. Yep. Great, thank you. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. We will move on to item F, which is electricity consortium, and Gabby, do you want to, who wants to talk about this? I'm assuming it's the handout in front of us.
Right, so I just gave you a brief handout with a couple bullets. We participate in an energy consortium, as does the Town of Monroe, the Town Board of Ed of Westport, the Town Board of Ed of Trumbull, I'm not sure about the Board of Ed of Bridgeport, but the Town of Bridgeport, Fairfield, both Board of Ed in town, and now Weston. And what that does is it allows us to buy electricity at a certain price for over 11,000 different accounts. So, if you, yeah. Basically, just about every street light that's on our property is an account, so it's, it's an individual meter. So between all those towns, there's about 11,000 accounts. And what that does is it gives us a little bit of purchasing power, not a ton, but it does give us a little bit. And so one of the, the things that came to the consortium is because right now we do have low pricing for electricity, looking out into the future, and that's to actually potentially lock into a contract that would take us from January of 2017 all the way through June of 2020, which I golfed at a little bit because in June of 2020, my daughter's going to be in high school already, so it's a little scary to be thinking that far ahead. You guys are going to be out of college.
Probably finished.
Yeah. So it's, it's a really, it's a long way away, but right now, the way the forward market in electricity looks, it's actually, it appears to be an ideal time to lock in for a 30-month contract. We are locked in through December of 2017, we're locked in with a supplier called Nextera. One of the thoughts of the consortium was to possibly not just stay with Nextera, who's given us good pricing, but also look at Constellation, who used to provide energy. I'm not sure if you're familiar, but sometimes you get, at home, you might get a little thing from a place called North American Power or wherever. So you don't actually have to use Eversource as your supplier for electricity, you can actually buy your electricity through another supplier and then just have Eversource deliver it. And that's what we do. Our bill is from Eversource, but they just deliver the electricity, they don't actually supply it. One of the issues we have in Connecticut and throughout the entire Northeast, so Northeast being Connecticut, Rhode Island, Massachusetts, Vermont, New Hampshire, and Maine, is that we are in this region that has limited supply of natural gas. You may say, well, what does that have to do with it? Well, natural gas is the baseline that, that supplies electricity, so to get electricity, you need something to make it. In the Northeast region, we traditionally use natural gas. There's also coal fired plants and there's some nuclear plants. The la, there was a nuclear plant in Vermont that was taken offline last year. So what that's all done is it's put pressure on the natural gas pipelines to deliver, to deliver gas to the generation plants to generate electricity. There was a plan to build a pipeline from, I believe it was in Ohio, through Pennsylvania, up through New York, and then back down into the Massachusetts area, but that's on, I'm going to say it's on hold, but there's a good chance that is no longer going to be a viable option. So what that really does is it creates a bottleneck for us in terms of getting electricity or getting this, getting the things that create electricity to us. And there doesn't really seem at this point to be a good way that we're going to get lower costs. So the thought is, by the consortium, is to potentially lock into some lower costs right now. It's also a good time of year to do it because we're not in the summer cooling season, if anything, we're still in the heating season apparently, Mother Nature hasn't quite figured out its spring yet. Plus, we're coming off of a winter that had incredibly, incredibly mild weather. And I think our December was probably warmer than our May is so far. So what that's kind, it's kind of led to this little funky period where prices have, they're, they're off their lows, but they're still tradition, much lower than they have been traditionally at this time of year. So that's, that's a thought. So what the consortium's done is it's gone back and it's pushed back on our consultant and said, look, can you also go get pricing from Constellation? So that's due back to us in about two to three weeks. So we'll see if Constellation can beat Nextera's prices for a 30-month contract. But Jim had asked that I bring this to you because it is a long-term contract and there is a little bit of risk involved in the sense that for some reason, we could have prices plummet and we potentially be locked into a contract. And the one nice thing about this though is it does make budgeting much easier. If you remember from the budget season, our usage has declined, but even, but our overall budget line really hasn't declined because prices have gone up. So about three years ago, we were paying about 6.8 cents kilowatt hour, now we're up over eight. The potential on this is to bring it back down under eight cents, down to about 7.7 or 7.8 cents, so.
But Gabby's point about, you know, locking into the year 2020, you know, it seems like a long way away to me, but if it, if it does stabilize our budget and it gets us a decent price, I mean, I think it's probably worth pursuing.
Can I ask a question? Is there a way within the contract to write something that could be on a fluctuating scale in our favor? Not to go over what we negotiated to, but if the, if the consortium itself can, if the prices go down, can the consortium take advantage of prices going down, if it goes down to a certain level?
It doesn't really, you can't really speak, you can't really hedge on a floor potentially. What you could do and what has happened in the past is, it, the contract has been reopened, not reopened, but it's been kind of thrown out, for lack of a better term, but it doesn't happen too often, it happened...
So there's no way to put some verbiage in there if it goes down to, if we're looking to get it at 7.8 hypothetically, or 7.7, if it goes down below seven, then we should be able to renegotiate our contract because we're in a 30-month contract. But if it only goes down to 7.4, we really won't do anything because that's, you know...
It's not worth it.
Not worth it. So if there's a way that if it goes down a point, somehow to maybe renegotiate our terms. I, I mean, it's got nothing to lose by asking.
Right, there is, there is something you can do, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be like, oh, the prices went down, can we renegotiate today or tomorrow?
Yeah, not, you can't go back and forth every time the prices go down, we know that, but maybe they could do it a one-time thing where we'll let you take advantage of it once.
We could certainly ask the question.
We can ask the question.
Yeah, I mean, you've got nothing to lose.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've done that in the past with one of my contracts, with one of my old, you know, vendors with stuff, with something that I had to lock in, but I would never lock in for 30 months without being able to renegotiate at least once. And now, out of 10 times, they'll let you do it.
It's like an adjustable rate mortgage, right?
Yeah, the five-year arm.
Only, only on the downside, not on the upside.
Yeah.
Yeah, we only want it in one way.
Yeah. That's where it gets a little tricky.
We'll make it for the consumer, not for, you know...
Yeah, I will, I will definitely ask.
Okay, thank you.
Like I said, we have, it has been reopened in the past, but it's, it's not traditionally done strictly, simply because the supplier has to actually go out and purchase and...
Yeah.
So they've got to hedge on the other side.
Yeah.
All right. Perfect, anything else? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Don't hold back.
All in favor?
Good night.
Thank you. You're the clutching one today.